All right. Good evening, everyone. The time's five after seven. Sorry for the late start. I'm going to open tonight's meeting of the Maynard School Committee. First order of business is our minutes from the January 18th meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. January 18th, if you say right.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I know I took a look at them. It seemed like a pretty good summary. Looking back at it, it reminds me of just how long a meeting it was when we were here on the 18th. Yeah. All in favor? Motion passes three zero. Colleen, do we also need to do the 14th of December as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, moving to minutes from our December the 14th meeting, I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second. We're also agreeable.
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor? Passes three zero. Thank you. Chairperson's report. I don't have a lot to report tonight. What I do have to report is actually an agenda item for later in the evening. I do want to just call to attention to the community who may at some point watch this at home, but I really want to compliment Michelle and Jen and Bob and the entire Maynard leadership team, our representatives from the National Honor Society last night. My wife participated in the Financing Our Future event and just raved about it. So, I'm so impressed. There were some people who are very opinionated in that room, and I've even heard wonderful things from them as well, which is not always the case. So, I just think it's fantastic. The fact that we were able to educate members of the community, involve them in such an interactive and thought-provoking activity, yet keep it very apolitical, I thought was absolutely wonderful. The time for politics and negotiating and worrying about numbers and everything will come, but as far as an educational exercise was concerned, I heard nothing but good things about it.
Yeah, we had FinCom representation and Selectmen representations, and that was good, too.
Fantastic.
One of the neat pieces to me was the, when you talked about the percentages of where the money came from, and I mean, we struggle with it, but when you saw how bottom-heavy it is and how little we get from federal and how much of it is on local and different capacities, it really is an eye-opener when you put it like that.
Awesome. And I think that pretty much wraps up my chairperson's report. So, let's move on to agenda item number three, superintendent's report. What do you have for us tonight?
So, I was going to start with the same thing. We really need to thank Michelle Rizendis, our business manager, because she was the one who, it was her concept, her idea. She organized it, she managed it. She had the creative idea of getting students involved, which was absolutely wonderful. So, we need to thank the students, because I know at my table, it wasn't just us learning, it was the students, too, because I remember when we were talking about the aging population and the amounts that students will be covering in taxes, you know, I think it was Nora was like, "Oh, wait a minute. I got to take care of you when you get old." And I said, "I already am old." But, you know, it was really interactive, and the students really were wonderful, because they were learning and helping facilitate, as well as coaches. So, can't thank them enough. I can't thank the Board of Selectmen, FinCom, and all the school committee members, because it really was a community event. And in fact, one of the members of FinCom, Ken Estabrook, said we should do this annually. So, I think that, I think that's a good idea, that we should, we should do this again. So, I'm excited about that and the positivity that that brought.
Can I, can I jump in just to say?
Yeah.
I want to send a shout-out to Mary and I were at the same table. And our student facilitator, Kyle, Mystics Celtics game.
I know, I know.
Did he, did he tell you guys that? He was like, "I told him I miss my cell phone."
And he actually was okay with it.
He was fantastic. He just rolled with it. We had a blast.
Sophia, you facilitated, right?
I did it facilitate.
No.
Olivia did.
Olivia did. And it was almost, I think everyone was in NHS besides Kyle. And we were like, "Oh," because NHS was mainly doing it for, you know, to help out, but they also get like hours for community service. He's like, "I'm not even getting hours for this. I'm just..."
I know. He was having a blast, and he did say that. I'm like, "I can't believe you're not in National Honor Society. I've got too much on my plate. What can I tell you?"
Yeah. That's Kyle.
It was very cute. I also would love, you had mentioned two others, Michelle, and the third one really hit me about where the kids are going or something like that.
The lifespan.
Yeah, I thought that was a real...
I can send you guys, I have like the write-ups and even like the coaches' guides, so you can take a look at like how the activity works for that.
I would really enjoy that.
I would love to hear, yeah.
Just to take a look at it.
I also, yeah. I really like that idea, and I also think it might be a kickoff to something bigger that we could consider. I have some other plans.
Good thought.
So, on how to make that a big conversation, because it's so important.
Yeah.
I just want to, I honestly, I know you're the only one here, but I cannot tell you that enough, how much I appreciate you guys helping us out and helping me out personally. And I would have to say that the students' participation in last night was probably the most important part of the night. And honestly, for me, it was. Watching you, like, I find joy in all of that kind of crazy stuff. We all talk about it all the time, but like watching how engaged you guys were was really impressive. So, thank you personally. Thank you.
Didn't you also say the coordinator, something that helped you? He had made the conversation.
Yes, he did. I was telling them.
Did you tell them?
He like, just was like...
Maybe to tell the world. It's such a good thing.
The trainer.
The person that trained them, who actually is the guy who created this, so he was very passionate about it. He was supposed to do it in 45 minutes. They graciously stayed for an hour and 15, I think, or even longer. But he was blown away by how great they were, and like I said to him, like, they were taking notes, like, they, you know, because he was on the phone, so he couldn't really see everything, but he had nothing but awesome things to say, and he was just, he was saying, "Wow, it went that great. Maybe I should tell everybody." Like, they should definitely do it with students. And I'm like, "Well, if they have a group of students like we do," you know? It was, it was a huge positive.
Awesome.
Oh, I have one more thing.
Yep.
And that is just, I wanted to thank Mary Branley for meeting with the Maynard leadership team and the union leadership on Monday. We worked collaboratively on several really important topics, including a future cellphone policy and a community survey. So, it was, it's, it's great when all three, you know, administration, teachers, and school committee are working collaboratively. So, I wanted to thank you for being there.
It's okay. I really appreciated the time.
Yeah. And a lot of thoughtful discussion, and, you know, that helps us to move forward and provide a better product. So, I just wanted to thank Mary Branley for her work, too.
Awesome.
And I'm done.
Olivia and Sophia, you have the floor.
Oh, it's actually a good height today for me. So, the first thing I wanted to bring up was that in June every year, the school is able to send one sophomore for a leadership seminar. It's called HOBE. And before I was a sophomore, I had no idea what it was. And then I was graciously chosen from nominations within the teachers to do it. So, now, we're actually in the process of picking a sophomore for this year's seminar. And I'm really excited, because now that you, I've gone through it, I applied to be a junior staff member, and so now I can watch whoever comes from Maynard this next year and kind of facilitate their group and learn more about leadership and just getting in with volunteering and community service, and I'm really excited. And I hope that once I leave high school, I can continue to be a part of it, and I'm just really happy that Maynard was able to bring it to the high school and that the students have a chance to do this, because it's a great opportunity. And ever since I did it two years ago, I've done hundreds of volunteer hours and activities with the group, and I was actually able to bring the student government in for Special Olympics these past two summers to be a part of it as well. So, it's a really great program, and I just want to push that it keeps going in the Maynard system, because it's a really great opportunity for sophomores. So, yeah.
Yeah, might as well continue with the finance tonight. Um, yeah, it was, it was actually awesome. I'm not even just saying this, like, I really learned a lot. And I think what's going to be really useful about it is, you know, me and Soph have been here quite a few meetings. Sometimes those end-of-the-year meetings, me and Soph like to give our piece on things when it comes to, you know, the public and the students get a little riled up. But I actually genuinely feel like I get it now. So, I think that it's going to be really useful, because as a student representative, when people do start to get crazy, I actually, I know what to say, you know? Like, I know how to back you guys up. I got your back.
You mean, we're not fire-breathing dragons?
Yeah, no.
To destroy the schools?
But I think it was really useful, and I would definitely in the future, because I know that there are so many passionate students, and I think that it would be really useful for them to get involved. So, hopefully, it does become an annual thing. Another thing, the Law and Government class, which is an awesome class, is going to the prison very soon, next Tuesday or Wednesday. Yeah, really excited about that.
Which prison are you going to?
It's the Shirley men's one. Yeah, I'm really excited about that, because it like directly correlates with my senior project, too, so I know I'm probably going to like cry, and it's not going to be good. But I'm really excited about it. And, yeah. Want to talk about Drew Seely?
Oh, yes. So, as we've talked about in a couple of the past meetings, me and Olivia are both a part of the Little Mermaid musical, which is in March, so if you're interested in coming to see that, we'll be in it. And a cool thing that's happening that we actually coordinated through the production is, we're actually getting a special guest. I don't know if you know him, Drew Seely. He was the voice of Troy Bolton in High School Musical, the first one, and he actually was Prince Eric on Broadway. And he's coming to teach a masterclass on Monday, February 26th, I believe, for all the students involved in the musical, which is like huge for us. He's going through all the scenes with us, he's doing all the music with us. It's a full, full day, like kind of field trip, but it's at the school. And he's coming, he's going to, you know, do the autographs, the whole nine yards, and we're really excited, because we've never kind of had this opportunity before, especially every student who's involved in it gets to work in it, whether it's your tech crew or whatever. You get to kind of be involved in this opportunity, and I'm really excited. She, Ms. Blanchard has been amazing with the whole thing, and she's tried to keep it kind of a secret, and then she let us know that there'll be people manning the doors and everything, because now everyone in the school is like, "Oh, my gosh, Drew Seely's coming. Like, we need to get in." And so, it's exclusive to the Little Mermaid cast, but we're really excited, and I can't believe that we're getting this opportunity, coming from such a small school district. You don't think that a famous person would be walking in the doors to teach you, you know, acting skills or singing skills. So, we're really excited for the opportunity, and I'm excited to get a picture and an autograph. So, it's going to be a really good time, but, yeah.
If you watch another Cinderella story...
Yeah, he's in that, too.
He's the guy. Um, yeah, last thing. I just want to, I know a lot of you guys have probably heard about this, because I've been reaching out to a lot of people, but the National Honor Society is, I know I talk about this every meeting, sorry, but, um, we are currently trying to kind of change how service works. So, the first step, instead of hours, we want to kind of create a project system. This will really be put in place next year, but we're trying to work on it now. And the NHS officers are going to be doing a food drive for the month of February. We're really excited about it. We are putting a lot of effort into getting not only Maynard but surrounding towns involved. So, we'd really appreciate any type of help with publicizing the event that we can get. We'd really appreciate it. We have boxes at Global Gym, Shaw's, hopefully Stop &amp; Shop &amp; Act in the Banks in Maynard, Mistress Dan Studio in Maynard, the library, all three schools. So, we're really hoping to get as much participation as possible. So, yeah, any help with that we can get would be awesome.
You send us some marketing stuff.
I was going to say email us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be great. I have a flyer, too, if anybody wants a flyer.
So, we can put it out on Facebook, on Twitter?
Facebook, Instagram, Twitter.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
And Paul Camaro from the Beacon should be involved in both, next Tuesday, you said? I'm sure she'd love to do...
Yep, next Tuesday's in the boxes will be.
An article and also in the food drive.
Yeah, that'd be great.
She loves those things, so...
Yeah, I know the Beacon just put out something online today, looking for content.
Oh, did they? Excellent, yeah. Do you want to do, you want me to follow up with her, or do you want to?
Either way.
I will. I'd be happy to.
That'd be great, yeah.
So, can she reach out, who should she reach out to for the food drive?
She can reach out to me.
Okay.
Um, I think someone has my email. I don't know. I can give it to you if you need it.
I have it.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sure I have it, yeah. They have your address, I have Sophia's, so, yeah, no worries.
And it would be Mrs. Blanchard for the Tuesday.
And Mrs. Blanchard, just to reach out to her.
That'd be great.
Okay, yes, I should do that. All right. And can I just ask a question, or it's more for future reference? One of the things, when we had the, when Mary and, no, excuse me, Dawn and Beth Lynn did the roundtable a couple of weeks ago, one of the things that came out, and I've thought of this before, and we tried to put it together, but maybe we could sit down at some point to have a way to connect with the alumni after they've left Maynard.
Definitely.
And to be able to come back and tell us what your experiences have been like and that kind of thing, and maybe, I know I've talked to Ms. LaBelle about it before, we were talking about a Facebook page or something like that, but maybe if we could sit down at some point...
Yeah, definitely.
With a group of people, and if you guys are okay with that.
I know, um...
We've been wanting to do that for years, yeah.
It's a huge resource, that, yeah, we would love to keep you guys involved.
Definitely. In the past, they've had like some of the students come back just to talk about like their student experience, but I definitely think that there's a lot more to be said. And I know that, especially now that we've been a part of this for almost basically two years now, we kind of can see what gets put into this and kind of have a new perspective on the whole school system as a whole anyways. And I know that we've been saying since then that we want to kind of kick-start all these new changes, but it's hard to follow through with that when, you know, we're graduating in a couple of months. So, I think it'd be a great opportunity for us to kind of keep those changes happening and let them, let us put in the work, even if we're not still here. So, I think that's definitely a good idea, and whenever, if you want to shoot us an email or something like that, we'd definitely be interested in helping out with that. I know not just us, but some of the other people on our student government and things like that, because we were talking about things like potential scholarships and stuff that we wanted to bring, because as a class especially, because we've tried to fundraise a lot of money to do stuff like that. So, just all those kinds of things, that'd be a really good idea.
Thank you.
Awesome. Other questions for our representatives? Any college acceptances trickling yet?
Oh, yes.
Decision is so hard.
Yeah. It's weird. It's like, both of us kind of did our colleges early action, but it's like you find out, and now we're kind of like, "Well, we got five months to wait till we like make our decision." So, it's, it's weird now.
I remember last year at the meeting when Janelle was here.
Yes, I remember that.
She broadcasted her, uh...
Yes, I remember that.
Her acceptance to University of Alabama. We were sitting there.
It's like signing day.
It felt so long, like from then, and now we're here, and it's like, "Uh, now I got to make my decision."
Yeah.
But we'll keep you guys informed, and we'll broadcast it as well, like Janelle did, so...
Fantastic.
All right, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Amazing.
I was going to stretch the rules for you a little bit tonight, just so we could, you know, have a little dialogue.
It's not clear, is there anything I need to do?
Try the veal. Don't forget to tip your server.
Go Patriots.
Yeah, exactly, right. All right, that takes us to agenda item number six, Friends of Fowler Fields update. I asked for this agenda item just because I went with the Friends of Maynard Soccer to the CPC meeting last week, and we presented our project. We did a Q&amp;A. We talked extensively about the design, the funding, the revenue streams, community engagement, maintenance plans, capital plans. It was really a pretty extensive conversation. Maynard Soccer was well represented. I was there representing the schools, and then Aaron McClosko was there, because he's been piloting, or sort of leading the project as head of DPW. I'm happy to report that we got very favorable feedback on the project. They were hearing from two projects last week, they'll be hearing from the other two applications for projects next week at their, their meeting, and then they will be voting on the projects on the 28th of the month of February. So, the fact that no further follow-up questions have been asked is a pretty good sign. So, I'm cautiously encouraged.
Is it a, is the follow-up project the only one that's recreational?
Yes.
That's good.
That's good.
Yeah. Yeah, there were a couple of individuals that really wanted to make sure that we had been thoughtful enough in our planning. I say "we" as the liaison, but that they had been thoughtful enough in their planning to make sure that it wasn't a project that had a short lifespan and that they would have to go back for future funding in the, in the future. So, the maintenance was really discussed quite extensively. Michelle, I gave you a ton of credit in front of CPC for your, your actions as far as trying to really tighten up our ship, get our usage fees up to snuff, and they were really encouraged by the information that I was able to share with them.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. You've worked hard on that. You deserve a lot of credit. I believe I called it the old system of gentleman's agreements and handshake agreements.
Yes. So true.
So, yeah, and it's, it's good for them to know also, because they look at it through a different lens, and everybody who can, you know, sort of walk away with an understanding that we're trying to do the right things and do more with less, and everything that we've worked so hard on over the last five years that I've been with the board, you know? One person tells another person, tells another person, and suddenly, you know, the word gets out there, so...
Awesome.
That's what I have for the Friends of Fowler Fields update. What do you have for us, Dr. Girardi, for Leading the Nation?
So, I'm really excited to give the school committee a first view in what the website will look like. I've been working closely with our technology director, Steven Wojcicki, on this project. We're still gathering the content, so what I'm going to share with you is just a skeleton at this point. And I've already incorporated some school committee recommendations. I know, Mary, you, you know, suggested some edits, and we worked on that, and we're, but we are still collecting content, because what I'm really excited about this project is that I'm asking, well, I talked to Nancy, she's a teacher leader, and there's so many good things that go on, that she's working with her team to write their own piece of this. And so, now they're going to have ownership, like, they're going to be proud of the wonderful things they do in second grade, but it's going to help us to be able to project out all that good information, because there's so many good things, you know, we hear our students come up and talk about all the wonderful things that don't get out there. And so, I'm really excited. But I just wanted to share with you what the skeleton's going to look like so far.
Do we want to kick the, the screen around a little bit, or do you want us to come around?
Yeah, Nancy's already seen it, so I'm just going to pull it around this way maybe a little bit, so you, everybody else can see it. Nancy's already competing for it, right?
Really? Looks good. The colors are awesome.
Oh, sweet.
So, I don't know if you can see my cursor. It's not focused. Let's try to focus a little bit, so...
Yeah, much better. Thank you.
So, if you click up here, it'll go to the State Leading the Nation. It should go to the State Leading the Nation website.
It's trying to load.
It's trying, yeah. Okay, so there's the, the state website with their logo and their explanation of what it is and their data. We'll go back to ours. And so, you can see, we're going to have some really cool pictures of students at WAVM, students in the play, Fowler Play, the logo, scrolling, an explanation of what it is. This section, we're going to fix right now, it has those three big things I talked about that the state's proud of, but it has all the wonderful things we're proud of. I really wanted it to either be over and under or side by side, but one of the problems is Steven has to make sure that the website's designed to look good on a, on a cellphone.
Yes.
So, so that's, you know, that's a little jumbled right now, but it's a lot of really neat, by the number of statistics. And then you see on the right-hand side, the Did You Know? And we're going to add so much more to that. There's a verb, "by me." And then up here, we're going to have these different fold-owns. So, we're going to have In the Classroom, and we're going to have explanations of all those things and more, because I could reach out to more and more people even than the last week. And one of the questions is, that Steven had, was do we put, like, for, let's say, you know, Maynard Special Program, do we want to put the text right under it, or do you want to have it so you just click on that? And I, I said, "I think less clicks, the better." So, then he said, "Well, then we really should put a lot more Did You Know? inside, so that there's, you know, where it, it looks formatted correctly." So, those are some of the nuances as far as how we're going to set it up. But in addition to In the Classroom, Before and After School, we have lots of programs you can be proud of, field experiences, and there's so many more than that, that we're working on getting partners, which includes Maynard Education Foundation, Maynard Music Association, there's a lot of other boosters are going to be right there, so I've got a lot of people. And then, what I really like to do is get showcase events with dates, because this is sort of that getting out there, you know, like, we're going to have this wonderful winter concert, we're going to have this wonderful, there's going to be a lot of things that are going to be part of this celebration between the 7th and the 11th. So, we're going to have showcase events, too, so that people can click on that and know where the, where the events are. So, that's going to be the website in a nutshell. And that's actually a picture of the students in Guatemala during their recess. So, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or any feedback.
I wonder if we might have pictures somewhere on there of student work, whether it's, because I know you've got like visual arts.
People knows.
But having, having student artwork, or, you know, as an English teacher, I'm like, are there any great pieces of student writing that we could showcase?
I was thinking also, pictures of presentations from the senior projects.
Senior projects.
Capstones.
Maxinopoly had done a, a great article for the Maynard Education Foundation, so it's already done. So, that would be great, too, with his robots and that.
He just showed me that.
It was amazing.
He just showed me that today.
Great, great job. That would be another really good one, to, to find some things at different, at the different school levels.
So, you know, and also, I just received an, an email from Nancy, our science teacher at the high school, Nancy G.
No, she's not at the high school. She's eighth grade.
She, she was at the high school last year.
Correct, correct.
But anyway, she just co-authored like a scholarly article on universal design for learning.
Oh, excellent.
Really impressive stuff. I know we have one teacher who's an author, who has a book. I love your idea of incorporating writing and literature as well. Awesome.
And also, I wonder, I know that you have the WAVM students making a video, with the video part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think it'd be awesome to interview, we have, we have the, you know, WAVM folks But I think it'd be awesome to interview, we have, we have the, you know, W A V M folks to make student videos. What do you love about Maynard High, you know, Maynard High School? What do you love about Fowler? What do you love about Green Meadow? And like, just short clips, but you could splice them together of kids saying different things that they love. I think having student voice on there somehow would be awesome.
I believe that W A V M's working on it.
No, well, they're doing a one-minute video as part of a competition, but what you're saying is, because...
No, I think they were going to do the only in Maynard video.
Oh, okay.
I think we have that going. I can double check with John, but I believe we've already have the only in Maynard.
Okay.
Which is going to include student perspectives and such.
Awesome.
Fantastic.
Like, you know, kids at Green Meadow doing the We Are Kind, We Are Safe, We Are Learners pledge, or I don't, I don't know. Like, even the little...
Or Mahogany rolling out the red carpet.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, so in some of those, like, all those bullets you saw, where, that's what we've been doing is trying to either collect video or pictures to go along with the narrative on each one. So, in some cases, like Jennifer Adams wrote about the Sister City School. I don't know if you've had, on the website, we actually have a really nice video that the students from the school did. So, instead of just doing a picture, we're going to have a video of the students from Spain talking about how wonderful their experience was here. So, we're going to try to introduce video and picture as much as possible to get that student voice. And that's one example. But I love the idea of what do you love about Green Meadow Fowler, you know, like...
What do you love about Maynard School?
Yeah, that's awesome. So, it's really exciting, and Nancy, I do love the, already, these are just pictures, some pictures, about how you could just see the difference in the quality compared to our website right now. And by the way, I don't know if I shared that with you. This, this website is our first pilot using WordPress. So, and I talked to Nancy about this earlier. In the past, we've, I've actually brought to the school committee the idea of improving our website by hiring a, you know, a lot of people will say, yeah, for $30,000, we'll make your website really beautiful and then we'll manage it for you. What I didn't realize was the management part is really inexpensive. And if you have a technology director who knows how to make the beautiful website, what he said was, he's using a software called WordPress,
Yes.
which more than 50% of the websites on the internet are made with that. So, he had the knowledge. So, now, this will be the pilot for this homepage. And then over the summer, he plans on working on, on the whole website being converted into this. So, it's going to be, we're going to be able to really improve the website. And one of the things I'm really excited about is because it'll be a different level of service, we should be able to connect social media to our website, so now we can push information out. And that will be really helpful in us getting all the good things out there. So, so it's a really exciting project. As you can tell, I'm excited, but I love the ideas. All right?
All right. Let's move on. Item number eight, policy number 513, school choice, second reading.
So, attaches to the draft that we shared the last meeting. I know Colleen updated some of the revisions that were suggested at this meeting. I would like the full school committee to vote to accept the policy. Subcommittee's recommended revised policy 513, school choice.
So, I will make a motion to approve the policy with just two changes. And they're minor ones, but to number four, there's, there needs to be a period after the four. And then inserting will before be, so we don't have a full verb there. And then in number five, same thing, inserting students for admission will be, the selection of non-residents students for admission will be in the form of first come, first served basis.
Excellent.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Home favorite? Motion passes through zero. Mary, as always, thank you for your extremely thorough English knowledge and every reading skills. Because I skimmed it and I didn't catch that, so gold star for you. Can I say that in all honesty? Fiscal year 19 budget update. Budget Subcommittee, what do you have for us tonight?
We don't have a, we don't, yeah. Well, so I've been working off of, off of the presentation that Michelle gave to the finance committee in our joint meeting and kind of taking some things out that I think we don't need in that presentation. And then Michelle's also been helping Mary and me both with other graphics that we'd like to include. So, for example, we're trying to put in where would we have been if we'd gotten what we'd asked for from local service each year compared to where we are now. What's that difference over time?
Right.
And one of the other things we asked recently, it was actually a community member who raised the question about what do our budget increases actually look like if you take away special ed changes and increases? What do our percentage increases look like? I think that's a great question, and I don't know that we'll be able to get it in time for the February meeting. But I think, like, moving forward over time, if we start to gather that information, it's also helpful to have as part of the presentation. So, we...
Because those are mandated expenses, so then it will show that the actual increases are much smaller when you're doing what you have to do.
Right. In the future, it will be actually pretty easy because the way we have it set up now, even at the town side, because they expanded on the accounts that the school has at the town. They used to just have salary, athletics, expense, and transportation. But now we actually split it up into a larger chart of accounts. So, within salary, it's regular ed, special ed. Within expenses, it's regular ed, special ed. Within transportation, regular ed, special ed. Also with our new chart of accounts and the new software, it's broken down that way too, so it'll be easier. But I was thinking after, yesterday, after you had emailed me that, because I, because we didn't keep track of it like that way, and there is ways that I could get that information. The best place for us to probably look for that is in our previous end-of-year reports. Based on the Department of Ed's function codes that are allocated. Because we have to report on the end-of-year report between special ed and regular ed anyways. So, it wouldn't necessarily show our budget, but it would show our expenditures in each one of those. So, that might be something where we can gather that information, but...
But I think, I think, I was just going to say, like, even just having that over time, the graphic to look at of what has that meant, you know? I think it's going to be powerful, and I actually feel really, I don't know about you, but I feel pretty optimistic about the February meeting because I feel like we've had way more joint meetings throughout the year. And so it's not like we're springing anything new on anyone. I don't know. I'm feeling hopeful.
Definitely.
Well, just...
So, we're going to get together anyway next week to kind of finalize, yeah.
I love, I love the idea of splitting out what would have been minus the special ed just on the off chance that we have to go on the PR campaign following the February meeting. Because I know that there were some terrific inroads made last year when we started sharing more information and engaging in a good dialogue. So, more information is always good.
We did, did we share, I can't remember if we shared this at the last meeting, but we did have at the last joint budget meeting, we asked, you know, they, because the board has seen the numbers, potential numbers for the budget. And I said, so how closer, like, what are we talking, what are we talking about? And they said, we're going to come pretty close. So, I don't know what that means financially.
Okay.
But, um...
We're going to come pretty close, pretty close.
That's great news.
To what we're asking, so, so.
That would be great news. Yeah. Speaking frankly, that wouldn't suck.
Who'd be the first?
Like my first four budget cycles. Okay, cool. Excellent. All right. Let's move on. Dr. Girardi, let's talk about your, your goals for the upcoming year.
So, last year, we, we created the cycle starting in January, and it's that time again. And I attached the document with the format we use. We could just have the discussion around the goals. But even last year, we talked about these being, like, multi-year goals because some things are just so important, especially in my role. And, and I gotta be honest with you, I really appreciate what the Budget Subcommittee has been doing because, you know, usually Michelle and I are tied up even more, so it helps me to focus on these goals. So, I gotta thank you, really, sincerely. And it's actually helped me to have just a little bit of extra time to do some of this, you know, exciting PR work too, which is really, you know, we've talked about for years, but I haven't been able to do it because we're always so busy on some of these mandatory things like budgets. So, the fact that you've gone so far above and beyond, I can't thank you enough. So, but, let's back, get back, getting back to the goals. The, the professional practice goal, like last year, was Indicator 2D, laws, ethics, and policies, understanding and compliance with state and federal laws, and mandates, school community policies, collective bargaining agreements, and ethical guidelines. And the reason why I feel this is really important to continue is that we're still working on the contract negotiations with our largest union, and to me, getting that correct has a potential for great improvements in our school system because the teachers are what it's all about. So, we really want to work hard at it. I know Justin and Dawn are on the committee with me. They know how... It's time-consuming, but I'm really excited. I really feel like it's going to, it's going to result in a wonderful bond for all of us. So, I'm excited about that, but it is a lot of work that's really important. Also, we do have a grievance that's going to arbitration, and the arbitration processes can be long and complicated. Colleen and I were working on that today, getting, finding documents, you know, you're rummaging through old papers to try and find evidence and things like that. And so, you know, that's really important too because that, those sort of things, arbitrations and grievances, they have monetary implications. So, for the school district, it's kind of important for me to make sure we follow the process correctly and try to save money and, and, you know, do the right thing. So, those two factors are why I think that professional practice goal should stay in that realm. I don't know if you want to talk about it afterwards, or do you want me to go just run through them first and then we can talk about it?
Yeah, let's run through them because there's a couple of more global questions that I want to ask as far as meeting our obligation to evaluate you on an annual basis. So, let's talk about your goals first.
Okay.
And then we'll talk about how we could do perhaps like an interim evaluation, for example. So, carry on.
So, student learning goal would be the second goal, and I did Indicator 1D evaluation, provides effective and timely supervision of all staff in alignment with the state regulations and contract provisions. And I really believe that focusing on administrative supervision and evaluation is going to be really important this year because we did try a new model of administration. So, it's really important for you to have me doing the supervision and evaluation to get that input. Also, as I mentioned earlier, Mary and I were talking about surveying and working with the union to get their impressions. So, there's a lot of work around seeing if this model works well, if it's the right model, and then making recommendations for staffing to the school committee. So, I think that's really important. And last year, it was on evaluation, but it was on a slightly different aspect because I think Michelle, Jennifer and I were really working with teachers and training and teacher leaders on the A S T R, A S, I always get the acronym.
A T S, analyzing teaching for student...
A T.
A T S R.
A T R S, A T, whatever. But that was really great work, but this year I think I really need to focus on administration and, and how the new model's working. And then the third goal would be ensuring effective communication among all stakeholders. And like I said, I just can't thank the Budget Subcommittee enough for freeing me up to be able to do this kind of work with the, the website and Leading the Nation campaign. It's been really nice for me because I've actually been able to get out and talk to a lot of different teachers. You know, like, talking to Mark today, I'm like, oh, my goodness, I didn't think of putting computer science on there, Mark. And he's like, oh, yeah, let me show you the M E F write-up. So, I think that PR campaign is so important. I think we've talked about it here for a lot of different reasons. I'm excited that it's all coming together, but, you know, I believe that it'll be help, it'll be helpful in that work that the retention task force is going to do too. So, I really feel that's an important one. In the past, I've done the global learning, because I know Mary, Mary, she used to say, Bob, you should do that because you love it. I think you know I'm going to do that anyway, right? Because I do love that part of it, but I don't feel like, sometimes when you have so many, these three things are so important to us, I know to the school committee, getting the PR right, getting the administration right. These things are very important, that I think that, I think the three goals will be a lot of work. So, those are the three goals I shared with you tonight.
Sure. Members' questions for Dr. Girardi?
I guess my, my only comment would be, maybe it's under the PR, maybe it's an expansion of that. But again, the roundtable that Dawn and Beth Lynn initiated, one of the things that came out loud and clear from the parents that were there was the communication too. So, I don't know if that would be a fourth goal because that is really right up there in my mind, and I know it is in yours too. So, I don't know if it would fall under the PR or, you know, but just incorporate that piece.
Under three, right, probably?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I think it would be under there.
And I also think, again, there are some things, even though it might not be, I, you know, I was saying, we just met with the Latin parents, you know, and there was a communication foible that occurred. So, working with them on that, you know, I explained how we've had, in the past, I've been here for six years. We had some problems at Green Meadow with communication, but once Dawn and I worked it out, then we had the best communication of all. You know, before, once, before we had worked it out, there were some problems, parents' concerns. And then it was, you know, Dawn and I worked on that as a goal together. And then when we had Sandy Hook, Donna was the first one that called me up and said, Bob, this happened, you know, this is Friday afternoon. Are you seeing what's happening? We need to have a parent, we need to have a community forum this weekend before the kids come back on Monday. So, for me, I get goosebumps thinking about the fact that the principal heard the concerns. And when we had that, that community forum, the town administrator was there, the police chief was there, the fire chief was there. Everybody came together as a town, but then we answered all the parents' questions. People came to school on Monday and felt good about it. And all the other superintents were then struggling with, well, what are we going to do now? We were so proactive because Donna had figured that communication piece out and was so proactive that our parents that knew that the police, the fire, that we were all working together, that we had plans. Sometimes we can't tell everybody the plans because we don't want the bad guys to know the plans. But once we communicated all that really well, we got, we got through Sandy Hook much better than most of the communities in Massachusetts. And so, like that model of good communication, we just need to fix that in a few other places, and I think we will.
Right. And that's not for you to take on. It's for you to teach.
To work with.
I guess to work with the principals.
And create structures.
And the instructors, right, exactly. And, you know, as, as much as those big episodes, also things like when one of the teachers, you know, goes out unexpectedly or something like that, just for parents to be kept in the loop. And like, they keep saying, we don't need to know the details.
Right.
It's just, please, just keep us apprised of what's going on in our kids' classroom. And, you know, the transformation, actually, almost transformation from every grade to the other grade of, you know, what's going to happen, what's going to be different next year versus this year. I mean, the transitions from three to four is obviously, and from eight to nine is obvious, but, but also going from five to six because you're going from the upper elementary to the middle school, that kind of thing. So, just all along, and I think if everybody is on the same page, it's not going to be that difficult. And we do it once, and then it's, it's part of the routine.
Okay. Mary, anything from you?
I think they look like good goals. I really like, I do wonder, you know, one of the things, I guess it would be under... No, I imagine it's under the second goal, but I'm thinking about concerns about just continued differentiation with curriculum. And, and I think now that we have Donna too as the curriculum person, that that might not be your jurisdiction as much.
That's the hard part with some of these goals, is a lot of the student learning goals, really Jen's doing amazing work. I could, I could take credit for it and say, well, I'm leading it. But really, she's doing amazing work in that area. And, you know, we do work together on some things, but she reads my mind. At a meeting just yet, just today, she, she was just going right in the direction I wanted to see our district going. So, we're blessed to have some really good administrators.
Yes, we are, Mary.
I think Justin found an error that was, that was a pretty...
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, so I'll fix that. He found one that didn't, didn't line up with the cut.
It, it happens, especially when you carry things over from year to year.
Yeah, exactly.
I've caught typos when I do my professional practice and learning goals. It's under your second one.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The 1D E feels like...
That, that's, that was an old one that didn't belong there.
No worries. So, the other thing I do want to bring up, since we're on the subject of evaluation, we owe you an evaluation. That's one of our jobs, is to evaluate Bob annually. So, if you would, sometime over the next week or so, not imperative, take this document from last year, blast it out to us with any evidence that you would like us to consider. I will have a conversation with the other members of the board offline and identify a person who will sort of gather all the information and do like Jamal has done the last few years and write up an evaluation for you.
Cool.
But like I said, it's a busy time of year. I understand it. I'm glad that we're looking forward, but at the same time, we do have the obligation to provide you with a thoughtful evaluation. So, yeah, we can put that check in the box and keep on keeping on. Thank you. So, it brings us to the end of the evening. Members' comments and questions?
Just, I wanted again to give a shout-out under the heading of Major Education Foundation, which generously just gave, gave us $50,000, which was pretty. The Middlesex Savings Bank, sorry, gave... M E F, $50,000. They, I guess they did it to all of the 24 communities, but it means a lot. It means a lot to, you know, allow us to provide even more grant money for the great things that our teachers and, and the students and the administration do. So, we are just bouncing off the walls. We just can't stop talking about it.
I know in years past, I've had the opportunity to come to sort of the celebration event every year to, to look at what that money has supported in our schools. So, I can only imagine the great things that are going to happen with that much more money to sort of disseminate.
Exactly, yeah.
Super exciting.
Kind of, yeah, open up the avenues. So, that's number one. Number two, the, I put pressure, this is scholarship, under the scholarship heading. So, I've been putting pressure on the Board of Selectmen to provide a scholarship for, for students, for seniors. And I thought, hmm, if I'm putting pressure on the Board of Selectmen who are going to do one, I wanted us to maybe thought, think about providing a scholarship. $250, you know, not, not huge, just if people are okay with it. We, the scholarship committee, we, we provide, I think it's about $50,000 that we're actually responsible for, for providing to students as well as others that come directly from the sponsors. But it would be a really nice thing for us to do if we wanted to do that. So, that's just something to think about. And then the third thing was that I'd gotten a new M A S C bulletin. And one of the articles was having to do with money that's available from the MSBA for different renovations or repairs or things like that. Do I remember that I saw something, that the selectman submitted something last year and we didn't get it?
Yeah, no, Erin actually, Erin worked with us, and I think it was for roofs, for roof repair. And I don't know, I don't think we got it.
I'm wondering if we should do it again?
Yeah.
Because the need hasn't gone away.
I think that he, when we were at a, in our Capitol meeting, I believe he mentioned something about of, either they were applying again, or they were thinking of applying again, or whatever.
Because the building next door is high need.
It was, it was...
We miss eleven band-aids on there for years.
It was originally for the building next door that they did it.
Yeah.
Building, so for Green Meadow.
No, it opens up January 5th. It actually says accelerated repair program is primarily for the repair and or replacement of roofs, windows, doors, boilers, and otherwise structurally sound facility. That deadline is February 16th. So, there's not a lot of time.
Yeah, I don't know. I know he did do it for the boilers. I believe that when we got our new boilers last year, it was through this...
Was it? Yeah, I remember saying it was...
So, he's pretty familiar with it, so I would...
Should I mention it to him?
Yeah.
Well, absolutely. So, all right.
Anything from you, Mary?
I thought there was, I was looking for information about, have you heard of the book? It's called How to Raise Adults. Have you heard about it?
You told me about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think she's speaking. She was in Concord a few weeks ago, but I feel like...
-a few weeks ago, but I feel like somebody sent me, and I wanted to find the date, but I can't get it on my computer. If I find it here, I'll jump back in, but I'll pass it to you first.
Okay. Gosh, I don't know that I have a whole lot. I know that I just recently, you know, on the topic of communities and supporting schools and supporting students, I just got the email from Boys and Girls Club, this year's the twentieth anniversary of Maynard Road Race. I know my wife and I are signing up to, to run it, so anybody who's interested, it's always a really well-attended, really well-supported event.
Wear your St. Patty's Day attire.
Yeah, it's on St. Patty's Day this year.
It's my birthday.
So, you know, we can all pretend to be a little bit Irish this day.
Your birthday, did you say?
St. Patrick's Day.
My friend, my best friend. And he's a teacher too, he's a teacher too.
So that would be absolutely fantastic, um, to see all your friendly faces out there, walking or jogging. But other than that now, it's just, it's been a long couple of weeks. On the topic of union, we do have another session scheduled for next week, um, with the association. So we continue to try to make progress every time we get together. Hopefully sometime soon, we'll be able to put some signatures on paper. And that's about all I've got. Did you find the book, Mary?
It's, yeah, it's, oh, it's not working on here, but, but it's at Bedford Elementary School.
Okay.
It's coming up, but I don't, can't tell you the date. Once I figure it out, I'll post it on Facebook page.
Actually, Concord Kyle did it, and we did it as a joint thing. They invited us to go there, and I did go, and she was amazing. Is it Julia Lithkott-Hymes?
Yes.
And it was amazing, because she meets with the students during the day, and then talks to the parents and say, by the way, did you know what your students, what your children told me? And she's, she's really good.
Once I find the date, I'm sorry, it was on my Facebook event thing, but Facebook is down.
Sure. Uh, you can't get it on it through the wifi here, it's blocked.
Is that why?
It's blocked, yes.
Oh, okay.
We do have controls.
But I think it's-
Only for the adults.
Only for the adults.
The kids gotta get around to it.
The kids figure it out.
The students fixing it.
It's like those child-safe locks, yeah, the adults are the only ones that can't use them.